Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the monthly meeting of Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board. I ask for your patience as we get everyone in place and ready to begin. I will call the meeting starting in just a few minutes. Mr. Perry, Mr. Gary, are we ready to begin our meeting?
We are.
Thank you. The first thing on our agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board is called to order and has been held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulation. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held by video teleconference due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Instructions on making written and oral statements via video teleconference have been distributed. Oral statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. All statements will become part of the hearing record. There is one agreed board order to be reviewed today. Mrs. Hampton will provide some comments.
Thank you very much, Chairman Hilton, and good morning, everyone. The district has received a number of comments on the proposed agreed board order this morning, including comments about the district's procedures for public noticing proposed agreed board orders. These comments have been provided to the board. With respect to public noticing proposed board orders, KRS 77.185 and APCD Regulation 1.08 require only a public hearing before the board may take action on that proposal. Notice of that public hearing requires a minimum seven-day notice per KRS Chapter 424. A written public comment period, which must run for at least 30 days, is not required for proposed agreed board orders. This is different than when the board takes action to adopt or amend a regulation. There, both KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulation 1.08 require the district to provide at least a 30-day period for written public comments, prepare a written response to those comments, and provide that response to comment document to the board and the public before the public hearing where the board is scheduled to take action. Going forward, the district will adopt this policy for proposed agreed board orders. Today, the district is recommending to the board chair that this public hearing be continued at your discretion to the February 16th board meeting so that written comments may be submitted on the proposed agreed board order and additional oral comments, if any, may be heard by the board at that time. If the board chair agrees, the district will public notice, a written public comment period, of course, taking into account the holidays, and prepare a written response to comment document for comments that are or already have been received and provide that to the board before the February 16th board meeting. Chairman Hilton, with respect to the district's recommendation, are you willing to... What's your pleasure here?
I agree.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. We appreciate it.
Any questions from board members regarding what we just heard from Mrs. Hamilton?
No, I guess we'll receive some of your comments on the summary before in February.
Good enough. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A public hearing will be continued till February, but we're going to start the public hearing today.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman Hilton. Board members, the district brings for the board's consideration an agreement with Dupont Specialty Products USA LLC, which manufactures vinyl fluoride for use in other chemical manufacturing. The plant is subject to a district-issued Title V operating permit and the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction or STAR program. The company's operating permit limits multiple pollutants, including volatile organic compounds, hazardous air pollutants, and toxic air contaminants, and requires monitoring, record-keeping, and reporting to demonstrate compliance with the permit. The district alleges that Dupont failed to operate their chemical plant as allowed in their Title V permit. On June 7, 2022, the company submitted a notice of an excess emission event notifying the district of possible excess emissions due to observed discrepancies in hydrogen fluoride and vinyl fluoride quantities on site. On June 21, 2022, the company submitted a follow-up report notifying the district that two valves were leaking hydrogen fluoride and vinyl fluoride to the scrubber from May 4 of 2022 through June 6, 2022, which resulted in excess emissions of 57,378 pounds of vinyl fluoride and 249 pounds of hydrogen fluoride. As required by District Regulation 1.07, Section 4.77, the company has conducted a root cause analysis of the event and is implementing changes to prevent similar events from reoccurring. These steps included replacing the valves on an annual basis, developing new specs for valves in that type of service, and adding additional indicators to the valves to allow field staff to, in field, verify the location of the valve positions. The company has agreed to pay a penalty of $7,500 to result in notice of violation. As discussed by Director Hamilton, the district recommends we wait a few months to receive additional comments.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Are these valves located indoors or outside? So the valves are probably located outdoors, but the way I understand it is they are located vents to the scrubber in case of release, so they weren't venting to the atmosphere. They were actually venting to the control panel. So they weren't leaking out of the pocket. They were leaking to other...
Oh, I see. And then into the scrubber. So the scrubber didn't scrub out this...
The scrubber scrubbed hydrogen fluoride, not vinyl fluoride.
Not vinyl fluoride. I see. Okay.
What was the total amount that they estimated?
57,378 pounds of vinyl fluoride, regulated as the U.S.
Is there a required RQ for that chemical report of quantities that they got to report to the National Response Center or...
I'm not sure.
That would likely be... That question would be a release under EPRA and also under the Louisville Hazardous Materials ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
We have a comment from the public whenever...
Yes.
There is not an RQ from vinyl fluoride, according to a commentator, Karen Greenberg.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gary, has a representative of Dupont registered to make a statement this morning?
No.
Mr. Gary, has any member of the public registered to make a statement this morning?
No, Chairman Hilton.
Mr. Gary, has any member of the public submitted a written statement?
Yes, we received several written statements which have been forwarded on to the board prior to this hearing.
Right. Okay. Are there any members of the public in the Edison Room that wish to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand. For each person, for each person, give instructions to approach the podium and state your name if we have anybody in the Edison Room that wish to make a statement. Seeing none, okay. Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on the teleconference?
I'm not seeing any raised hands, Chairman Hilton. From the public, I note that we will get back to the board in a moment.
Okay. Mr. Gary, has anyone else wished to speak?
No, Chairman Hilton.
Are there any questions by board members?
Yes, I see that Dr. May has her hand raised.
Okay. Dr. May?
You're on mute, Dr. May.
Okay. Good?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to understand the process from Dupont a little bit more. And so they voluntarily, you know, provide the information and reported the leak and such, but what is their inspection or how frequently do they do it to make measurements? Because, I mean, it took a month for them to determine that there was a problem. And so do we know what their process is?
So they described doing daily checks of their inventory, but the percentages were within the ranges of these checks until it proceeded to the end of the month, and it started showing up in their inventory as a larger discrepancy.
Okay. So then, I mean, at the end of the month, it seemed like a pretty big number, so is that's... I guess, do we need to ask them to tighten those parameters?
Oh, we can discuss that with them further.
And then, and this is all voluntary because one of the public comments was, you know, why didn't APCD detect this earlier? But, I mean, we don't send people out to check that type of thing, do we?
So on our routine inspections, we will ask about the quantities and flow rates, but that's not something that we would... We would not be going out outside of the normal inspection process to check those things.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
What is the frequency that we go out and audit these top of five companies? Is it every...
At least every other year, but sometimes more frequent.
Okay.
Well, when you say they check their daily inventory, what exactly does that mean?
What was described to us was that they had like an inventory control clerk that was checking amounts in various tanks and adding up the inventory, see what was on-site and what was going through the process.
It all seems kind of vague. Well, rather than ask you, I just would hope by the next time in February, when we discuss that, that we would have a more detailed discussion of that, how those measurements are made exactly. And apparently, they're going to make some changes to the procedure, but it just seems so odd that such a thing could be... A leak could be occurring for about a month and go unnoticed. Seems very peculiar.
Uh, Dupont.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Chairman Hilton, I note that we did get one additional question in the chat from the public. Dr. Megan Poole asks, will the February 16th board meeting be in person? And noting that if so, she'll hold her comments until then. Although, absent a change in circumstances, we do anticipate having an in-person option for the February board meeting, but as always, check our agendas ahead of time because if there is a change with regard to the pandemic or otherwise, it might be video teleconference only.
Okay.
And I'll just note that it will be a video teleconference, so we always have the option of attending in person if you'd like to make any personal comments.
Okay. Thank you. Based on requests from the public and the district and pursuant to District Regulation 1.08, I am going to allow for additional public comments on this agreed board order. This hearing will be continuing till the board meeting on Wednesday, February 16th at 10:00 a.m. to allow for additional written and oral statements. Moving on to the regulation, I will now call the regular meeting of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak, we are conducting the monthly meetings today via video teleconference. First thing on the agenda is we're called to recognize if we have a quorum. I will conduct a roll call of board members that are present on this teleconference. When I call your name, please say yes. Steve Sullivan. Okay. Dr. Colbert, he's here.
Yes.
Dr. May?
Yes.
Thank you. Candace White?
Yes.
Thank you. Arissa Neal?
Yes.
And Dr. Daniel Karsch?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Hampton, do we have any scheduled introductions for this morning?
No, sir.
Ms. Hampton, do we have any public recognitions this morning?
Not today.
Okay. We had the approval of amendments. The amendments of the regular meeting held on November 16, 2022, was distributed electronically for your review. Are there any changes to the amendments by board members? Any upgrades, corrections? Hearing none. The amendments of the regular meeting stand approved and adopted. Public policy meeting held on November 10, 2022, the amendments of the Policy Committee meeting held on November 10, 2022, were distributed electronically for your review. Are there any changes to the amendments by Policy Committee members? Hearing none. Thank you. Hearing none. The amendments are approved. Thank you. Mr. Gary, has anyone registered to make a comment this morning?
No, Chairman Hilton.
Has anyone provided written comments?
No, Chairman Hilton.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public in the Edison Room that wish to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand. For each person, give your name and your affiliation, please. We have anybody in the Edison Room? None? Okay. Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this teleconference?
I see no raised hands, Chairman Hilton.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Gary?
No, Chairman Hilton.
That completes the public portion of the meeting. There is no unfinished business scheduled for today. I have continued the agreed board order with Dupont Specialty Products. I have continued the public hearing on this agreed board order until February 16th. So this will continue as unfinished business until the February 16th board meeting is scheduled. Committee reports? No committees. Matt? Mrs. Hampton, we had the director's report.
Thank you very much, Chairman Hilton.
We need to correct something, and this is my mistake. That board meeting is actually on the 15th, February 15th, and that is my mistake.
February 15?
I made the same mistake, too.
I think I've repeated it.
Okay. Well, let the records reflect that, the 15th instead of the 16th.
It's a Wednesday at 10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
At 15.
Just to be sure.
The 15th.
I'm looking at the calendar.
Okay. So the meeting of the Air Pollution Control Board is the third Wednesday of each week at 10:00 a.m.
Actually, okay.
For February, that will be February the 15th. Very good. Okay. Well, as 2022 gathers to a close, I want to thank everyone who's joined us throughout the year at our meetings. We recognize that our work doesn't get done unless we have the public participating with us, and we recognize the commitment that you've made to be part of our work. To be sure that the virtual part of our meetings runs smoothly, we're looking at some new technology. If you were in the room earlier, you might have observed Owl Lab Meeting Owl in Action. If it will work, it will help us run our meetings a little bit more smoothly. It will also help us meet the requirements of the Kentucky Attorney General for having our board visible during our meetings. But again, as always with technology, it's a little bit of a work in progress. We borrowed this meeting owl from our colleagues in the Office of Information Technology, and I do have to say that they have been outstanding partners with us. We meet monthly with Chris Seitz, who is the director, and Joan Sheffer, who is the assistant director, and they really support our work. They do a lot of unblocking roadblocks and stumbling blocks for us on the technology front, and they're always suggesting ways that our work can be more innovative on the technology front, and we're grateful for their work here in Metro Government and for their work with APCD. So another thing to note, particularly those who join our meetings virtually, we received some feedback that it can be challenging to find where to join our meetings. For example, links to board meetings and certain hearings, including the one held today, those are on the board's meeting page. Links to join other hearings or other meetings are elsewhere. And so to make things a little bit easier, later today or perhaps tomorrow, you will find a new meetings, hearings, and event calendar, which will give you a one-stop-shop to join our meetings. If you currently have another website page bookmarked in order to join our meeting, don't worry. Any information that has moved will be replaced with a clearly marked link to that new website page. As always, we appreciate any feedback and insights folks have about accessing our work, working with us, and especially as we try to do this in a hybrid fashion, so let us hear from you. My thanks to Byron Gary, Andy Purdon, Sherry Steiner, and Michelle King for their thoughtful and innovative approach to the district's virtual offerings, and to Matt Mudd for creating the new meetings, hearings, and event calendar. This year, the district was able to hold four Clearing the Air workshops. We started with Keep Louisville Leafy: How Trees and Vegetation Impact Air Quality, which was held during Louisville Tree Week, followed by Louisville STAR Program, APCD's online resources, and Louisville's Year in Review, all of which we held in December. All of these workshops are now posted to our website under About Louisville's Air, where you can review slide presentations, or if you have a little bit more time, actually view those presentations in video form. They're about 45 minutes, but they have some great information, and they also have some great questions from our community that are answered in there. Each workshop was well-attended. We had about eight to 14 attendees, that is, not including district staff who also attended, and there were 33 unique registrants across the series. Everyone who attended has received the full series presentations and links to the videos, which were sent out in an email this week, and Louisville STAR Program, the first in the December series, was the most highly-attended session. But again, we hope that folks will go back and review each of these presentations and let us know if you have any questions, comments, or thoughts on the series. It's been a busy month. I couldn't get the first part of the year started, it seems, but this last part of the year seems to have just been nonstop. On December 5, the transition team from Mayor-elect Greenberg's administration met with members of the district staff to learn more about us and our work. It's my understanding that they've also met with members of the community and industry representatives to better understand their perspective on the district's role as the Commonwealth's only local air pollution control agency. I'm grateful to those who shared their insights with the transition team and to the transition team for their commitment to Louisville Metro. On December 6, I presented a very brief update to Metro Council's Public... Pardon me. Public Works Committee on Odors, and it was really brief. It was planned for 20 minutes. I think I got about four, but we covered a lot of ground. It's been a very intense odor complaint problem this summer. As the board is well aware, we've received well over 800 complaints about sewer odors due to the drought conditions in the combined stormwater sewer system, and unfortunately, we continue to receive complaints about lingering odors. Talk about MSD here in just a moment, but while my presentation was way shorter than planned, I'm happy to report that Michelle King, the district's executive administrator and director of program planning, and I were able to share additional information with a council member directly after the committee meeting adjourned. On December 12, Ms. King and I met with representatives of Norton Healthcare as part of their planning for the Norton West Louisville Hospital and work addressing health disparities through the Norton Institute for Health Equity. The meeting was facilitated by Arneeta Gatston, state and local chair of the NAACP Environmental Climate Justice Committee and executive director of the West Jefferson County Community Task Force. It included presentations from the district, the Environment Institute, and Park Duval Family Health Centers. The goal of the meeting was to listen and learn about environmental issues prevalent in the community, including the history, current state, and ongoing efforts to address ongoing pollution. Glad to report that additional meetings are planned in the new year, and I'll continue to update the board when those take place. Finally, on December 15, the district, including Mr. Gravette, Matt Dwyer, our enforcement coordinator, and Matt Mudd, our communications specialist, and I met with representatives from MSD, including Tony Parrott, MSD's executive director, and Brian Bingham, MSD's chief of operations, and staff from, I think, every department involved in MSD's operations that may generate odors. They had a large crowd, and it was a very lengthy meeting with a lot of information shared. We discussed MSD's ongoing work under the agreed board order with the Air Pollution Control Board to resolve odor violations observed around the Morris Foreman Wastewater Treatment Facility and from the collection system west of 9th Street to the Ohio River during the summer of 2019, when flow within the combined sewer system was reduced due to hot, dry conditions similar to those experienced this summer. As part of that agreed board order, MSD is required to develop and implement a county-wide odor control master plan through a phased multi-year project and repair, rebuild, and replace untrapped catch basins in the Park Duval neighborhood. Their odor control management plan is intended to cover not just Morris Foreman, but the collection system as well. As part of this work, which they have met the milestones that are set out in that agreed board order to date, they have prepared a number of technical memoranda where they have evaluated the condition of their systems, including catch basins, Morris Foreman, pump stations, and other infrastructure that may generate odors, including the Bell's Lane Wet Weather Treatment Facility, which has a large pump station, an open wet weather basin, I believe its capacity is 25 million gallons, and a high-rate treatment facility. To date, MSD has completed and posted seven of nine technical memoranda, including Technical Memoranda Number Two, which identified over 3,000 untrapped catch basins within MSD's service area. And as you'll remember, those catch basins serve as kind of the J-trap, like underneath the sink in your house, to prevent sewer odors from entering the ambient air. They have also posted their catch basin cleaning schedule, complaint logs, and community meeting information on their odor control webpage as required by the agreed board order. This week, MSD updated technical memos number six and seven with additional sampling data and analysis, and finalized technical memo number eight, New Odor Control Technology Recommendations for the Morris Foreman Wastewater Quality Treatment Plant, the Combined Collection System, and Selected Pump Stations. Technical memo number nine, Odor Control Conceptual Design, and the final report for Phase One are to be submitted by the end of the fourth quarter, so at the end of the year. And I believe that MSD will meet that deadline, and I appreciate that those technical memoranda will be summarized in that final report, and perhaps there, for those of us who are not familiar with running a wastewater treatment system, I think that it will pull things together in a way that will make those technical memoranda a little bit easier to digest. The meeting, which was requested by the district as MSD works to complete these final technical memoranda, was intended to discuss MSD's next steps in implementing the plan to proactively address odors from Morris Foreman and the combined sewer system, especially in those areas between 9th Street and the Ohio River, where residents have reported the most disruptive and prolonged exposures to sewer odors in their neighborhoods during 2019 and again this year. this year. This meeting was very productive. The district looks forward to the final report for Phase One. We'll share that with the Board when we receive it and to MSD's implementation of these odor control strategies to reduce and implement -- I'm sorry, to reduce and mitigate odors, both in the short term and in the long term. In the meantime, MSD has submitted its 2022 Annual Catch Basin Report for the Untrapped Park Duval Catch Basins. As you may recall, the Board's Agreed Board Order requires MSD to provide an annual report on its catch basin work in Park Duval until it has addressed the untrapped basins. A copy of the report was provided to the Board, and both MSD and APCD will post it to our website. The report provides an pertinent part that MSD began its work this summer at a cost of about $161,000. They inspected over 250 catch basins, and out of that work, they plugged nine catch basins, replaced an additional nine catch basins, and made repairs to three catch basins. That doesn't sound like a lot. We've asked them to explain that in their explanation for why that work, in their estimation, will resolve the issue as this. Those catch basins are configured in such a way that they believe that trapping the ones that they've completed the work on will trap the odors from those that are daisy-chained together. They've gone down and essentially plugged the one at the end of the line because they believe that that will plug all the catch basins up the line as well. Unfortunately, due to the ongoing odor issues due to the drought this summer, they've been unable to determine whether or not that repair is sufficient. And as a result, they plan to continue to investigate odors in the catch basin areas in Park Duval in 2023. The Board's Order requires them to continue to report annually on that work until the issue is addressed. So at this point, we expect them to provide us a report in 2023 evaluating that work. In the meantime, they're moving on to other areas where they have untrapped catch basins. In particular, MSD's contractor continues to inspect catch basins in the California, Chickasaw, and Shawnee neighborhoods. To date, 951 catch basins were inspected in the California neighborhood, and 71 were identified needing repair or replacement. Due to upcoming roadwork in the area, the California Replacement Project is being split into phases to prioritize those basins within the roadway project area. Phase One has been awarded by MSD, and construction starts in January. They'll replace 15 catch basins, and then they will complete the remaining 56 by March. And again, they'll continue to report that work to the Board. When we've received the final report, we'll ask MSD to come and speak to the Board about that work and to share their plans with you all going forward. But at this point, are there any questions about my report?
It's not specifically about your report, but it's about my understanding. There's a vent every so often on every line, I believe. Is it a reasonable expectation that there would be no odor coming out of that vent?
That is an excellent question, and... No, there are odors within our sewer system. And so there are places where MSD must vent in order to prevent, for example, having a wet weather event where we get a lot of rain and it pushes a lot of air down our combined sewer system, and it actually blows a manhole cover up into the air. And that's why manhole covers have vents in them. The pump stations also vent. One of the things that MSD has identified in their technical memoranda is that within portions of its system, particularly west of Ninth Street, they have a pressure problem. There is high pressure that is there more frequently than not that pushes those odors out. So it's an ongoing issue. It's not something that happens just when it rains and there's extra volume pushing through the system. There is something causing that high pressure to push odors out of the sewer system within that area consistently. That's an issue that MSD has identified as a point for mitigating odors. How they reduce that pressure, they'll have to figure that one out. But that is one of the things they've identified as part of the work that this Board required them to do. Any other questions?
If not, yeah. Dr. May?
No, that's okay. Go right ahead, Chairman Hilton.
No, I was just going to ask, you know, just comment to Mrs. Hamilton. She says the MSD plan on coming to the Board Meeting sometimes in 2023. I'd be interested to know what portion of Jefferson County has dual sewer systems, you know, sanitary and stormwater, because that also could contribute to some of their problems.
Yes, and that is a really good point, Chairman Hilton. They've answered that question in their technical memoranda, but generally speaking, the area, I guess it's the waters and the newer part of our county has what are called sanitary sewers, which only receive...
Stormwater.
Sanitary sewers only receive the stuff that comes out of your toilet.
Right.
So your house. They have separate stormwater systems. They don't have what we have here in this kind of older area of the county, which is that combined stormwater wastewater system. So MSD has a lot of our area here, about 150-year-old sewer system to contend with, that serves not only to take waste, which is that really important public health function that they serve, but it's also to prevent flooding.
Okay.
So I'll be sure and identify in one of their reports where they've outlined that for you.
Yes.
But we'll invite them to come once they have prepared their final report and to present to the Board, and be sure that they, in their introduction, clearly define those areas. I do have one more item, but if the chair will allow.
Yes. Dr. May...
Oh, sorry, Dr. May.
Dr. May, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I just, I heard the phrase, but I still don't quite understand why. They said that they made the repairs or replacements of the nine catch basements -- catch basins, but was not able to reassess the effect of their work due to the drought, you know, during the summer, you know, because, and there was, you know, lots of complaints. I mean, why, I guess, why can't, why didn't, why can't they make an assessment, you know? Because it seems like there was more problems, and I kind of thought it was because they hadn't gotten to the work yet, you know? So I was kind of surprised when I read the report that they actually got some work done, but the complaints were even higher.
Dr. May, it's because the odor issue and the odors themselves were so prevalent west of Ninth Street that MSD was not able to effectively evaluate whether the odors they were observing were from the catch basins they had repaired or just simply within the ambient air shed.
Okay. And that's good, understood. And then also, you know, when they, I mean, is it simply a matter of budget? Because they have identified lots of different places, you know, they've prioritized things, you know, just like they're doing for the next year. But is it, I mean, you know, obviously, there's more that they could do, but I am presuming that's a function of the budget and how much they can spend for repair and replacement. Is that a correct assumption?
That is my understanding, Dr. May. It's helpful to me in terms of trying to understand MSD's priorities, and we've asked them to think about how they can share all the work that they have ongoing right now. They have several really large projects underway at Morris Foreman, for example. And Morris Foreman has a large footprint within West Louisville. You know, it is the state's largest and oldest wastewater treatment facility. They currently are completing an emergency dryer project, which is intended to help them better manage their solids. That work should be finishing up. I believe they take operation of the new equipment from the contractor in January. But they also have a much larger project for essentially, I'm trying to think of the best way to describe it. The Kentucky Division for Air -- I'm sorry, Kentucky Division for Water and US EPA, as part of the consent decree, have a requirement for MSD to do a significant amount of work at Morris Foreman to address its operation under the Clean Water Act. That work is ongoing and is expected to be completed in 2026. As part of that work, MSD also anticipates that it will further reduce odors. So there is planned work taking place there. And their reports, which they provided to us, detail that work. For the collection system, this is not an area where they have previously looked at as a source of odors, and they're now beginning that work. They do have funding available to them from some earmarks from John Yarmus' office, but their funding, people who hold their purse strings are their Board. And so they and Metro Council may look at their funding. We hope that the Boards work here in requiring MSD to do this really detailed and thorough investigation of what's the problem, and then what are the options to repair it, that those entities who help fund MSD will use that information to, as Dr. May correctly notes, really prioritize the work to further reduce the odors, and especially using the data that both APCD and MSD have that show where we have repetitive odor complaints, and prioritize from there out. It's interesting to me, I'm kind of a wonky person, to read how the Clean Water Act looks at the operation of a wastewater treatment system. These technical memoranda, again, they are very detailed, and I do appreciate MSD's commitment to really digging in and trying to identify the problem, what are the fixes. I do believe that their Board and hopefully other funding partners will take note. And again, when the Board comes to report to our Board and to the public, that they have a plan that clearly identifies what they'll do in the short term, because we do know that next summer, when it gets hot and dry, where we'll have odors. Our data clearly shows that. And that they take that into account and proactively take mitigation steps to reduce those odors in the short term, and then, of course, develop that long-term plan.
Uh, Director Hamilton, if the nine plugs don't work, have they given any timeline on when they're going to go back and look at that again? Like, they're moving on to another project, and that contractor has completed its work.
So Mike, they did not give us a specific date. It's ongoing work. And unfortunately, while they may be able to assess it, say, in January or February, they're still going to have to continue to assess it as we move into warmer weather conditions. And then again, when it gets dry in August and September. So this will be a bit of an ongoing issue. There were several places that APCD recognized there are opportunities for MSD to do a little bit of community outreach. They have, for example, a downspout disconnection program. Many older homes in the, in the older sections of our city in the past had both downspouts and pumps that connected directly into the sewer system. And they have a reimbursement program to properly disconnect downspouts and to close off that connection so that there are not sewer odors around people's homes. We've planned to have additional meetings with their outreach folks to talk about our observations in the field about that issue and how they may be able to, on a more widespread basis, address that issue. It's an ongoing challenge. The system is old. But as many of us have talked about here in the agency, you know, in the 1970s, when the Clean Air Act was passed, we had a big problem, and a plan was put in place to begin to work on that problem. And today, our air quality is significantly improved because a plan was put in place and folks worked that plan. Same with the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program.
I have a question.
Hamilton? Yep.
Um, I know you touched on this for a second, but I wanted you to elaborate on what was the MSD response to the residents who are complaining about the smells that were coming into their homes?
Thank you for that. With respect to residents and smells coming into their homes, again, for most homes, you have a J-valve underneath your sink, that pipe that's got that little dip in it. And if you fill that little dip with water, it serves to prevent odors from coming into your home. During a clarity meeting that MSD held in late November, I heard for the first time that there are some homes where in their basement, they may have a drain, but they may be so old that that drain doesn't have a bend in it to hold water. It just goes into the sewer system, and that was intended to prevent basements from flooding back in the day. We will be talking to MSD about how to properly share that information with folks and talking to them about ways that they may be able to help fund repairs. MSD clarified that, yep, that is absolutely the case. Some homes don't have a trap on their basement drain, and that no amount of, pouring no amount of water down that drain will cause those odors to go away, and that in many homes of that age, basements have been modified over time, and that drain may not even be apparent. So again, that's a place where we left our meeting with a, we're going to follow up with their comms folks and sit down with them to talk about how do you communicate that issue so that people aren't continually frustrated by the fact they have this sewer odor in their home? And then is there a mitigation measure that can be put in place?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question.
I have one question, which arises from some of the things you've said. How does the program of disconnecting downspouts from the water collected by the gutter system at home, how does that improve odors? Since what you say about the J-traps and the warm weather creating the conditions for the odors, it seems like adding water to the system would be a good thing, not a bad thing.
Well, that...
You know, just rainwater.
This may be an issue, two things. The downspout disconnection is required under MSD's consent order with US EPA in order to prevent untreated wastewater from going into the Ohio River during wet weather events. So downspouts were required to be disconnected as were sumps, because when we have those rain events, our system was already overloaded, and untreated wastewater was bypassing the Morris Foreman wastewater treatment plant and going directly into the Ohio. That's why there's that consent order with EPA on the water side. For homeowners, when those downspouts were disconnected, they're just a straight shot into the sewer system. There is no J-valve to prevent odors from coming up that gutter. So homes that are still connected, sometimes we get complaints, and when our compliance officers go out, they're not observing that odor, but that homeowner is observing it every night during those nice, cool spring evenings or fall evenings where they open their window. And then in their bedroom, they're observing odors because that downspout's right there. So reducing odors by disconnecting that downspout from the sewer system will help that problem. But a lot of times when those sewer systems, I'm sorry, when those gutters were disconnected, how they plugged the connection to the sewer system, that may need to be replugged. We did an inspection in the Shelby Park neighborhood, and we met with a lot of really great folks, and... And someone stopped us to say, "I'm always smelling sewer here on my front porch. Why do I smell sewer here on my front porch? Catch basin's way over there." We're all looking at the catch basin, and we're not smelling anything until we walk up and realize that that is neighbor's house where the gutter used to connect to the sewer system, the plug had broken. That's where his sewer odors were coming from. So it's a lot of work for MSD. And, you know, again, they've got a 120-some-year-old system to contend with. And I believe that we have an opportunity to work together with them to share what our compliance officers hear and see in the field and possibly do some additional outreach on their end to assist homeowners.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Chairman Hilton, I do have one more thing. So finally, I do want to report that each year, our colleagues on the second floor in the Office of Resilience and Community Service brighten the holidays for seniors, children, and families in need of a little extra assistance through an Angel Tree-like program. You may have observed a tree as you came in today. Generous APCD members raised over $900 this year through a chili cook-off, a holiday bake sale, and a silent auction. And they were able to purchase gifts, both needs and wants, including warm coats, clothing and other essentials, and toys, books, and puzzles for six angels this year. Other staff members adopted their own angels and with their families raised that total to eight. I'm grateful to all those who helped brighten the holidays for so many, and especially for APCD's Social Committee for arranging fundraisers, shopping, wrapping, and delivering these gifts to others. And with that, I'm grateful to the board for its continued service and support in improving Louisville's air quality. I wish everyone a joyful holiday and a very healthy and happy new year.
Thank you for a very excellent director's report. I thank the board and myself. We are looking forward to MSD coming in person because we have a lot of questions regarding what's going on. And I appreciate all the questions and comments. So just hold them until sometime next year, and we get them in front of us, and we can ask them all these different questions. But again, thank you for the update regarding MSD. Moving along, most of you have received the reports, our quality data report, those are all distributed electronically. Are there any questions by board members regarding the art quality data report? What about the our toxic report? See anything on that? Okay. No, let's see on that. And excess emission report? And the last one is the complaint, we have the complaint investigation status summary. I don't think I put any notes on this one, so that looks good. Any other questions or comments regarding these reports? Before, during the meeting, I want to thank all the board members for your participation and attendance during this year, 2022. It's been a little different this year than '21, but I'm looking forward to 2023, and hopefully we have a good year. And I appreciate all the board members for your support and attendance. And I think, personally, I think we have excellent board members on this board here. So I just want to personally thank each one of you for your continued participation and attendance at the board meeting. Saying all of that, saying all that, I will now adjourn the regular meeting of the board. And I'd like to thank everyone for your participation, and happy holidays. And the next board meeting is Wednesday, January 18th. If I looked it up, it is. It is 18th, it's on a Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., so that date is right, January 18th. So thanks, everyone, for your attendance. Thank you very much.